Okay, you are, you are live and live streaming, so we are good. Can I make an administrative announcement here? Okay.
Okay, sorry for my back. I'm gonna move out of the way so you can see the board. But we have a camera here. We will be on camera. We are live streaming to the town channel. When you stand up to talk, we have to use microphone off of the laptop. So if you could just step up here and speak clearly. So when we're recording, everybody can hear what we're, what we're saying. Okay? You are all set.
You get out of the line of fire.
I'm getting out of the line of sight. Hey, I've done this one.
That's what I did.
I know one.
Just a different word.
That's right. The hard part is just talking.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Resin. We chair the committee board. This is December three, Tuesday day for Republican period, six thirty, so five amendments. I'm gonna go down the amendments, one at a time. I'm gonna see if we have any questions or comments on each amendment. We're gonna make some notes, and then we're on the twelfth. We both felt we were totally very, um, excited. Does everyone have to take it from the chair area? Anyone have that?
And the board will really need them to speak up because the microphone's already in the shadows.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Uh, so let's start off with amendment number one. Um, I'd like to see if we have anything, if anybody has anything.
John, uh, we can do a forum, and then open a public hearing.
Okay, we'll do a quick forum and, uh, Michael Cal member. Bill Spencer, John Schumacher member.
Or the chief member, Captain Brennan member.
And Rick Reed is select board executive.
Thank you, Rick. So, well, remember number one, uh, anyone having comments on number one? Read it.
Here is the.
We have to open the meeting. Okay, if they open the public hearing, I'm opening it up.
This is amendment, post amendment number one.
Number one. Yeah.
I have a question. Under the section Junkyard, right, paragraph two, it says any property. It's talking about keeping a car that's not registered basically on any property. Um, if I'm in the position that I may have a car that's not registered for a couple of weeks for some reason, I don't think I'm gonna look in the zoning amendments. I would skip right over junkyard because that doesn't apply to me. So I'm just wondering why that's there under that heading, and maybe it should be somewhere else. Question.
Good question. Anybody?
Perhaps it would be good to read the amendment for the rest of the people who may be listening.
We're gonna have, uh, Pat Morgan to read it.
Amendment one would have been Article three, see definitions in Article five supplemental regulations. C junkyard and L trailers, snowmobiles, boats and commercial vehicles in order to replace subjective provisions and unclear terms, including but not limited to changing requirements that unregistered motor vehicles be stored out of sight to a requirement if they be stored in an enclosed structure. And changing the requirement that campers, boats and trailers can store it out of sight to a requirement that they be stored outside of a front setback. Would also add a process and details to the provision for temporary construction trailers and enable use for the camper as a seasonal dwelling by the property owner or non-paying guests for up to thirty days if in compliance with applicable laws.
And junkyard, you did. Would care for that? You wanna know where it?
Well, I'm just saying, it was an odd placement when it talks about any property. I'm thinking if I was in that situation where I might have an unregistered car for a couple of weeks, I wouldn't look under junkyards to see if it was allowed or not.
A quick comment. Um, yeah, two things. Uh, is this actually changed from where it is now? I honestly, I don't remember if it is under junkyard.
It's not, yeah.
But we can ask, you have it here.
Yeah, so it's how it currently is.
It's how it currently is. It's how it currently is.
Okay.
That's not a, but we have the camera online too.
One. Yes.
Doesn't mean we can't change it.
Right, if we're gonna change it anyway, it makes sense to, that just seems like an odd place. Because you might say you can't do that, and I would say, but are you calling it a junkyard?
Go ahead, Tara. See if we can hear you.
Yep, so I think just changing the title of that paragraph might be good, right? Junkyards and Unregistered Vehicles, something like that.
Yes.
Um, for those of you who don't know, that voice is our community planner, Tara. And she has a lot of pretty answers, so if you have questions that we can answer, we love. Any other thoughts on how to handle Barry?
Yeah.
Uh, Chris Barry, can you come right off of the web or mark?
Close your mind.
That's a good idea. Okay, two folks.
So, um, I have some specific questions about an unregistered vehicle. So it says that an unregistered vehicle can, and it also, I didn't see any mention of setbacks in this. Doesn't say anything about, at least what I'm looking at, which is right off the website, it doesn't mention setbacks. I know in your other, other parts of it, you mentioned that a thirty-five foot setback. Well, there's no setbacks mentioned here. So my question is, if I have an unregistered vehicle, can I put it in my front yard? Can I put it right on the property lines of my neighbors, both one side, the other, and then in the rear? That's, that's one question. So I'm assuming by the way this is written, the answer to that is yes. So also, that, how big of a vehicle unregistered can I have in my yard? Can I have a fifty-foot camper bus? Can I have a trailer? Can I have a camper van of any size? And how many unregistered vehicles, because it doesn't say here, can I have on my property for seven days at one time? Doesn't say that either. Also, if I have a vehicle and my uncle wants to sell it, and since it's unregistered, can I place his unregistered vehicle on my property and put a for sale sign on it to sell it? And according to this, it's seven days. Could I do that four times a year? Those are my questions.
And, uh, John, do you want me to answer one of those?
Yeah, please.
So it doesn't, it doesn't talk about setbacks because it says they have to be in a building.
No, I'm talking about when you're outside.
No, you can't have them outside a building.
You can for seven days.
Seven days.
Right, and, and nobody cares or we don't, it, no, it's not gonna tell you all the setbacks for seven days.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
You're, you're correct. It, it doesn't, it's not gonna require that it be out of the setback when it's only for seven days.
An unregistered vehicle, an unregistered vehicle, meaning, you know, a trailer on a boat, bus.
structure sure have to be a building or can it be a fenced-in area? Tara said building. This says enclosed structure. When I read it, I read fenced.
Go ahead.
Trying to deal with the problem of the person who has an unregistered vehicle. Does, I can, it's my property, I can put it there, but I want to add other people who say I'm adjoining your property or I have to look at your property. I don't wanna look at that thing indefinitely. So that was the stuff of the purpose of this. So the, uh, the initial concept was that it was going to be in an enclosed building.
Pointing at the definitions from, the definitions on the, on the internet, not just that. And basically, what it says is structure can also mean something that is constructed for built, such as a building for a plant structure. That's the way I interpret it, but I understand how you're. We, we have a specific definition of structure in definitions. The zoning ordinance, the four definitions defines what a structure is.
It, my, my point was that the setbacks, that that, those elements of the zoning ordinance would take care of the setbacks.
Please, the definition of what a structure is, if they have the zoning, please.
Give us one minute.
Yeah, thank you.
Structure. Anything constructed or erected with a fixed location or, or in the ground or attached to something having a fixed location or, or in the ground, including, but not limited to buildings, walls, fences more than three feet high, tennis courts, swimming pools, billboards, signs, piers and floats. Structure does not include poles, lines, cables or other transmission or distribution facilities, uh, utilities. Structure also does not include mailboxes, light fixtures, raised garden beds, walkways, or the like.
A question to that. What if you have a portable structure, a covering, affordable, like, uh, portable garage, not big, just enough to cover the car that it's, what's, Kwanzaa, something like that. They can be moved, not attached, permanent. That should be included too, if, and it would hide that object. So I think that's something you need to think about, and I think it goes beyond just vehicles. You've got four-wheelers, you've got a ton of stuff.
Next one. Uh, any other, uh, Charles, go ahead.
Guys, Mark, just a question, just to get it on the record. These, uh, regulations do not supersede anything in condo docs of our condominiums and.
Condominium documents can be more restrictive. They cannot be less restrictive.
Right, so just help to just, it's just to read what, what a typical homeowner has. This is a lot of confusion. No commercial vehicle other than pickup trucks, small vans, no snow traveling materials, disabled, inoperative, unregistered motor vehicle shall be kept maintained on any lot unless completely enclosed in a garage. No junk garage. No mobile home may be permitted on any lot at any time. A tent, travel trailer or motor home may be temporarily stored, uh, stored on a lot, provided it is shielded from public view and provided that no tent, travel or motor home ever be used for habitation purposes, period. The purposes of this subsection, temporary storage not to exceed seven days. This, this is, this is the real storage. The answer is no. Take your, take your, take your toys and put them someplace else.
What are you reading from?
That's the Moose Run Declaration. It's very similar to all of the condo declarations, who are all, by the way, written by the same lawyer. Jack McCormick's writing is everywhere. So we, we hold ourselves to this standard. The standard you're discussing is much, much looser and more complicated. And is it really necessary? That's you.
I, I, I might, I've actually two questions while I was reading. I, it was, I, the rule was that anything you had like a trailer or a thing like that had to be out of sight, right, from any road off near the house. Why is that changing? Okay, that's question one. Why is that changing? Why wasn't that good enough? And it does apply me, that's why I'm asking. Two, what does it mean that by, I, you guys probably already talked about this, but, uh, well, maybe my glasses on, that would help. So this rule is, the new rule in blue under trailers and snowmobiles and all this kind of stuff. What, um, stored in the front setback, what's the front setback? I have no idea what that means. Sounds like the front of the house. I don't know. Because the back of the house, I mean, I, that's, I just don't understand.
Yeah, on the bill, but the front setback is the front of the property. In other words, four sides of the property, so you got two sides of the rear setback. There's only one left, and that's the front setback that faces the.
All right, so they're all setback, no, you're saying, all four, like all around the house. Okay.
Yes, the intention was that, uh, nobody would be able to park their unregistered vehicle on any of the setback. In other words, it makes no sense that, say, that you'd be able to park it somewhere other than your front setback, but you could put it right against the property line of your neighbor.
That's fine. Okay, so you're saying it's all four sides. I'm, uh, so I guess my question remains, why are we switching this? I have a place where it's not gonna be seen from the road from the house, and you're, you're guys, whatever it's written now, it's gonna, I'm not gonna be able to do, you know, put anything back there. I don't understand. No one's, no one's complained about it? Oh, no one has seen anything I have? I was trying, I follow, I did, I was just following that rule, so I'm a little confused. Why now, if I read it correctly down here, that's not the rule anymore.
Lauren Hubbard.
So my memory served me well. Chief Payor came to us because it's become an enforcement issue. Um, and that's the reason we took it up and have changed it, worked with our town and changed the language.
I don't think that's a good idea. I mean, if it, if it meets the, uh, the first rule, why are we changing it? If someone complains, the police have to check it out. Got that, right? But they can make a determination, you know, I mean, that's what we have them for, isn't it? Are you guys for?
Yeah, one of the things he did mention is that how far onto the property can police go without a warrant? So if somebody complains, how far can they go on? Um, it becomes that sort of issue, like do they?
It seems like overkill because the rule was if you can see it from the road or another house, why does he have to walk in the property?
No, the rule was all setbacks, not just, this, this actually lessens the restriction, not tightens the restriction. Now it just.
Alright, so you'd have to know that I live in, I live in a, what's it called, hip head. So, well, so what's, what's the front setback?
Public way.
So, so, well, in front of my house or behind my house? My front house, well, front of my house.
What does the driveway go up to?
My driver's in the front.
That, that will, that will be the front setback.
Okay, so I get the setback, and that's true. I'm fine with that, but it still raises the question on why, if you can't see it from anyone's house and it's not a problem, why would, now we have, now down here, that makes that not, you can't do that, is what it's basically saying. You read the sec, what you guys have put in here, I believe. Like, tell me if I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong in how I'm reading this. So in our section L one, maybe, no, basically none of this could be parked or stored in the front setback more than seven consecutive days. And, okay. Alright, so that to determine by, you're saying, in my case, the, um, driveway goes down to the first half of my.
Yeah, I would, I mean, not knowing specifically.
You would, alright.
That would be the front setback, but actually the, this, uh, lessens the restriction because the, the current, uh, ordinance totally, you can't see it, you, so if you have a neighbor behind you and they could see it, but you can't see it on the road, now that neighbor behind you could call DPS and say, there's a vehicle there I see that's not allowed there, so, uh.
They couldn't see it because of the nature of the hill that you can't see.
Right, to this, you have to see it from the front.
Alright, I think that, as long as that's clear, I'm fine with it.
And the idea with the front setback is our police officers, our home enforcement officers are allowed to travel upon the public ways, so they could see what was being complained about. If it was behind the house, being complained about by someone from behind them, they could not take any enforcement action without going on to private protection. And so that is the, the issue that Chief Payor brought to the plan. And that's why, that's why it is, um, being pinned to the front center. Because that is the one on the public. Uh, you know, that, now, this does not, this does not in any way stop the condo association from saying you can't have it, or the homeowners association from saying that you can't have it viewable from anywhere, but that is a civil matter for that homeowner association with the property, not with the town to enforce it. So that's the difference.
So a quick question on the setback. I thought I looked it up. The setback is from the right away, not.
From the right away, from the public.
The forty-foot right away, not the twenty-foot road. So the setback is ten feet further back than the.
Yes, the town owns more than just the, the town owns.
Just a clarification of where the setback starts.
Any other comments on number one?
I think we're just talking about unwritten. Am I reading this wrong in, in L? Uh, no sliding campers, class A, blah, blah, blah. Why only class A or class C motorhomes? It's four classes of motor. A, B, B plus, C, and I guess, uh.
Well, that comes from the definition in RSA two fifty-nine sixty-nine, and we're trying to link it to the statute, um, because it makes enforcement.
Somebody, somebody has a class B. They're not covered by those.
No, because class B motorhomes can also be registered as private vehicles. Then, and it does depend on how the person registers the vehicle. They have an option.
So they can register a vehicle and not have it be a motorhome vehicle.
That's correct. That's correct. They can, they can register it as a van. They do not have to register it as a motorhome.
Well, I'll tell you that, in my case, that doesn't pass the duck test.
Well, it would, you would, you would have to take that up, you would have to take that up to.
Alright, there you go.
Our, the, your legislator.
The, the issue there would be, I think, one of insurance, no? If you want to register.
It's a DMV issue with this county town.
Right.
Well, to Tom's point though, it's this class A or C motorhomes or other recreational vehicles.
That's correct.
Would the class B be an other recreation?
If they register it as a recreational vehicle, then yes, we can enforce this on the class B.
Registered?
It is how it's registered.
So if someone were to file a complaint, the police officer would have to look.
If it's in the front setback, yes, and if they have it registered as a van, then it is a, just a regular privately owned vehicle, and it is not a recreational vehicle.
I mean, these, these give DPS a lot of difficulty. How's that different from just someone who registers that or van?
And that's why we left it on.
Way bigger, it's way heavier.
So this is.
But it doesn't matter to DMV if they can just register it.
What if it matters too much? Why do we have to follow DMVs?
Well, because then we would have to.
That is the classification of the.
We, we'd have to come up with a definition of van and what will be allowed.
And just so I'm clear, this doesn't say you can't park it there, it's just saying you can't keep it for more than seven consecutive days.
Correct, yeah, yes. And there's another section in the ordinance that does not allow habitation, so you can't sleep in. Right, so. It is what we have been trying to address with this change. This is, this is what is happening in town. You have people who are buying the vans. Some people are just modifying the vans on their own to be be, uh, places where they can sleep in when they go somewhere else, right? So, but that is still registered as anything, and the, and the code enforcement office and public safety department cannot do anything about that. It's a POV. It is just like our condo.
Thank God our condo.
Well, your condominium documents can be more restricted.
Barry, no question.
Um, specifically talking about, the one that talks about registered vehicles, not unregistered vehicles.
Yeah.
So we've got a thirty-five foot setback, but this doesn't imply, imply or imply to the other setbacks. So if somebody has a registered vehicle, they don't necessarily have to park it in their driveway. They can park it right on their property line, both sides and in the back.
As long as it's not visible from the public way, as long as it's not visible from that frontal concept.
That's not how I'm reading it. I'm reading it as no travel trailers, class A motorhomes or any can be parked or stored in the front setback for more than seven consecutive days, more than thirty days in the count here. So they can park registered vehicles on the side and the front, right? And then, so you're not restricted driveway, and how many can you park there at one time? On your problem?
There's no, there's no.
So it would be a lot, right? Not in your driveway, but be on the left or the right or in the back. That could be a lot of vehicles.
There are.
And then how many registered vehicles can be parked on your property that are not yours or registered?
Yes.
We're not addressing any of those.
Not addressing.
Issues. This amendment really is meant to change it from a vehicle that can be seen from any of the property.
Vehicle, then why would you need this? That's my point.
Can I, can I correct one thing?
Sure.
There, there is a limit, um, because junkyards aren't allowed in Waterville Valley, and the state defines a junkyard as two or more unregistered, so.
Oh, no, I'm talking about registered vehicles. Registered.
Yeah, there's no lim, there is no limit on that.
That was my point.
Yeah.
There's no limit, yeah.
But, yeah, there's no change to that.
There's no, there, yeah. And that, and that would be tough to defend.
My only other question on this is, did you consider making it two amendments? It talks about what you can see, and then it talks about people staying overnight. And to me, those are two different things, that people might vote no because of half of it, where the other half might be okay. If it's not an all or nothing thing, maybe break it out into two questions.
Uh, any more comments on amendment number one? I couldn't hear you. Really? Okay, y'all a little, or any more comments?
Thank you.
On comment, uh, amendment number one. Let's go on to amendment number two. Yeah, we're gonna have former reader four.
Amendment number two would add a steep slope overlay district comprised of slopes greater than fifteen percent. In this district, conditional use permit would be required from the planning board for any site disturbance greater than one thousand square feet. To prevent erosion and sedimentation, conditions for a permit would include limits on grading. Stormwater management and requirements for retention or replacement of vegetation, no structures would be allowed on slopes over twenty-five percent.
Uh, I'm Rich Havis, uh, for those who don't know me, I sent the letter in earlier. I was really surprised to see this, to be honest with you, and it is unclear to me as to what the problem is. And what the problem is we're trying to solve, okay? Ever since Waterville Valley has gone through the building process, we've been building. If we follow these rules as proposed, I could show you twenty pieces of property today that would not be able to be built. Okay, as an engineer, I can tell you, you can build a property. In a way more aggressive slope than twenty-five percent, providing the engineering. And the site work is done completely. When I look at, not to pick on any roads, just a statement of fact, when you look at Moose Run, when you look at the. Cascade Ridge, some of the other, those houses wouldn't be able to be built. In this type, with this type of, uh, of restriction. So we purchased our land in two thousand and eight, okay, we've been here thirty years, we lived at North Face in the condo, we purchased the land. On Snow's River Road, right beside another house that is got the same lot line we have. Our intention is to do the same thing they do, but this would restrict us, okay? So it's, it's discriminatory and it's unfair to people who purchase their property. Under the conditions that were there at the time. If there's a problem, let's solve the problem and, and highlight that. I mean, when I look at this, I see a couple arbitrary things here, like fifteen percent. Uh, grade over twenty-five percent, I can show you grades that are almost fifty percent, and they've always been welcomed in the valley. So I think this really, you can, honestly, I'm not sure what the. I don't know of any, and I've done quite a survey in the last two weeks, I don't know of any major erosion issues that. I can see, and I've been by houses poking up the driveways, all of them. So if the site plan is generated by a professional engineer. Or at least generated by somebody approved by a professional engineer and implemented to a standard. You don't need to do this to, to us people, there are probably six or eight. That number, maybe I undevelop lots left in the town. Okay, and whatever, whatever the number is, very few. So here we are, the town is essentially fully developed, I just don't get it. Okay, I'd be more than happy to discuss this if any, if it be part of a committee. But this to me just is unfair, it's discriminatory, and quite frankly. You know, I, I think it's, uh, when a town is already built out and so many houses. Including some under construction right now, don't meet any of this criteria, I think you gotta roll this back. Thank you.
I was just proud about.
No, I was gonna say that, uh, the, our land planner looking at our master plan, uh, recommended. Uh, a number of different potential amendments to our zoning. And this was one of them.
So which master plan is this?
The town.
Right, but it's been very, a lot of revisions.
No, we had, well, the last one was in twenty-two, I believe that's the one that guides the planning board now.
And how many lots will this affect?
Well, it could affect any and all lots because you have redevelopment as well.
Well, how many lots that are not developed right now, so you don't know the answer to that, but you're putting an amendment forward. That doesn't sound right.
Just remember, this is not the end of the element. So, this is what we're trying to see back on.
Can I make one more point?
Sure.
Yeah, yes, remember things when you're halfway through it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, listen, we're in the, we're in the White Mountains here, right? All the other resort communities and all ski areas have dealt with this issue. I have done a very high level cursory look at some of those, nobody limits lots to twenty-five percent. That I can find, okay, so, anyway, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said that initially, when we started talking about this, this was a recommendation from a conservation commission.
It was a, it was a working group you guys had with the conservation commission.
And what was the reason why they brought this forward?
Uh, erosion, the, uh, come out of, uh. Uh, residual that collects in, uh, culverts.
And, and, and not just, it, not just erosion, but the stormwater runoff itself, because part of the problem that we're trying to address. Is. Overtopping a covert, oh, you know, the, the fact that the ditches don't meet today's storm capacity. Um, and the numbers, I can say, in my opinion, are arbitrary. Because they come from a model ordinance developed with a team of scientists and lawyers and planners for DES.
So if the culverts can't handle the runoff of the rain or the snow. That's just nature, that doesn't have anything to do with somebody building a house with a twenty-five percent grade.
I'm sorry, this is my wife Sharon, I better have to go.
Deal with that later.
Yeah, I'll have to deal with that later, if the culverts, that's a lame excuse. If the culverts cannot handle it, it's up to the town to make sure they can, the culverts on New Peak Road can't handle anything. And we've taken no action on those culverts in the. I have pictures, I have films, so, and I disagree with. Okay, sorry, uh, these are clearly arbitrary, guaranteed are arbitrary numbers, thank you.
I, I, I was on the editorial board for the published document from DES, so I can provide you with the data.
You know, for fifty years, we've been developing in mountain terrain here in Waterville Valley, and there's a few lots left. We're, we're probably ninety-five or ninety-eight percent residentially developed, it seems to me this is unnecessary. You know, the, the, I look around this room, this, this people in this room that I think their houses would not pass this test. This, this, if it was implemented before they had built their houses. I just, it seems to me it's, it's unnecessary, I think the en- engineers and architects these days. Um, are more than, more than, uh, able to, to build on any land that we see in Waterville Valley right now. I mean, I've, I've skied all over the, all over the United States, and there's, there's places that you just couldn't believe that they could build houses on. And they do successfully, and, and we don't have a history of problems here with the, with the fifty years that we've been building these houses. And, uh, I, it just strikes me as an unnecessary, uh, change.
I think people make yourselves out for a whole bunch of lawsuits, if I'm this gentleman, I bought a, I'm thinking I'm building a house, I paid. Two hundred thousand dollars for that, and the lots now are worthless, I'm gonna sue you, that's what I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna with that lawsuit because. You're discriminating against four, six, eight people, whatever that is, a lawyer would love to protect this, just love it. And the town would be responsible for the problems.
I'd be happy to sell it for the noise that's driving.
Anybody wanna buy?
I have a question on GNH Conservation Commission Review and Costs. Um, and G, it says the planning board may obtain any other professional expertise deemed necessary. And then in the next paragraph, it talks about the applicant pays. Um, in that, if the planning board does decide to, to, they want other expertise, is it? A given that the applicant has to pay for that, there's the applicant has, has to say, whoa, I'll withdraw. I mean, does he have the opportunity to withdraw, or is that also just a given? It seems so, do you know what I mean? And in the next article, the next amendment, it talks about. Conservation Commission Review, but there's not a heading for that, and it talks about the same kind of stuff, but there's not a separate heading for that. I would say, just for consistency sake, if there's a heading that talks about this here and this amendment, that there's the same heading in the next one. Just for clarity.
Just, just the comment on zoning, there's a, a basic, I think, misunderstanding in the state, it's something I learned. That was just made, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember your name. Peter, Peter, um, zoning is not permanent, it can change, and if it changes to your detriment. Uh, that's the way it, it plays out, uh, you could sue, of course. Uh, but, uh, there's nothing that requires the value of your property to be the same, similar or better. Because of a zoning change over the years, now something you have now, if it's nonconforming, then it's grandfathered. So if that's. I'm sorry? Right, as well, if it was directed specifically at that particular, but a zoning change. Happens, zoning changes happen every year.
So with a zoning change like this, our value of our property right now is about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It would go to zero, right?
I have no idea.
Well, if I can't sell it and I can't build on it, it's zero.
I don't think this amendment says you can't necessarily build on it, but.
So if I can't build on it, what am I gonna do with it?
Well, if it's twenty-five percent, right?
So what am I gonna do with it? I can't sell it and I can't build on it, so therefore the value is zero, so therefore the town is gonna get zero tax dollars from me. Because I'm not paying taxes on something I can't sell or I can't use, that just seems rather ridiculous. From a lot of different viewpoints.
One easy way out of this thing, maybe that you grandfather. Lots that are undeveloped, that don't meet this specification. So I build a house, I come back a few years from now and say I wanna build a garage. I mean, my, my land is a tie-shaped land, Snow's Mountain Road and, uh. Chisinski Drive, I think it is, right? So I come back two years later, and I say I wanna build a garage, right? Or maybe you, Richard, on your property, wanna build something, that's a different scenario, they're telling me I can't do anything. And the conservation commission, as much as, as I respect that, and I think they do a good job and they have more work to do. I have yet to see erosion problems, I have yet to see water runoff problems. I'm here all the time, I walk every morning, like every street in the whole valley, okay? So, I mean, put, if I were to build a house, I would come here with a professional engineer plan and put it on the table. I'd make it right, I think the remaining lots would do that as well. So I think you need to, either, my is remove this, it's unnecessary. Or grandfather people who have vacant lots that are not built yet.
Why would somebody build a house with an erosion problem, they wanna fix before they built the house? With drainage and that, I mean, it, it just seems a little ridiculous.
Well, the erosion would, well, we spent, the town spent hundred thousand dollars on fixing the erosion on Snow's Mountain Road. Recently, because of runoff, we do have erosion problem in this town.
Well, you have erosion problem because of the, the tropical.
Well, that's, that's the point, that's what this is trying to address.
Yes, but you know what, I mean, uh, Snow's Mountain Road is in rough shape, it has been in rough. Yeah, I bet you do, uh, we don't have sewers, but that's another issue.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have culverts that go all the way to the top of Snow's Mountain Road. The culvert that comes down off Snow's Mountain Road is my land, it's where people dump all the snow in the winter and all that, that's fine with me. I'm just saying, there's no drainage on the other side, so.
Well, you're gonna see a warrant article, several million dollars dealing with that in town meeting twenty twenty-five.
I'll vote for that, yeah, it's about time, thank you.
Uh, the topic of grandfathering has been brought up at a couple of meetings because that is, is an interesting idea. And Tara, please correct me, we were not able to do that when you're changing ordinances. We discussed that, in, in relationship to another, you can't grandfather.
But you don't even know how many people this is affecting.
I just wanted to address that, that.
I think, I think.
Yeah, I have to be muted for a couple minutes, sorry.
Okay.
That, that's the issue with the home office and UPS coming, um. What buildings that are already there would be grandfathered, not, not lots, but.
That was my question, so say a house that's there on a, a steep incline. Burns, and the owner wants to rebuild, they can rebuild?
They can rebuild, that's covered under grand, that's covered under nonconforming uses in, in the zoning ordinance, but I. Can I address, there was a comment about. That somebody building a house wouldn't want erosion, and that's, and that's totally true. And that's why it's common when you build something to wanna get the water off your property as soon as possible. And that's what's causing the erosion in other areas and the issues with, with the stormwater. Infrastructure, so. In my mind, the most important piece of this amendment is the one that says. The runoff from your site can't be more after you build than before, and if. If the planning board didn't keep any other pieces than that, and they did it. And if, if the planning board didn't keep any other pieces than that, and they did it with the suggestion of the gentleman that's standing to hire an engineer, you know, that's something the planning board might wanna consider when they meet to talk about the amendments and the input from the hearing. But right now, you can't require somebody to have an engineer or manage the stormwater. You would need some zoning amendment, some form of this amendment to do that.
I completely agree with what Tara just said. I think it is reasonable, prudent to say that no additional runoff or storm, whatever the exact word she said, should occur after you build than it was before you. Okay? This lot I have, we bought it, is two strands going through. We bought it, we knew that. Okay? So it's a steep lot. I think her idea is perfect. You, you gotta deal with the wetlands and you gotta deal with the runoff. But God, that shouldn't be magic. That should have been happening in this town. As a, as a matter of course, for a hundred years, that's common civil engineering.
It does, it does for site plan review. That can be done, but that's only for commercial problems. And for subdivision for the infrastructure, not the private homes. And that's, I think, what Tara is suggesting.
Yeah, and that's fine. You have that same review.
That's.
But when you look around at what's being built, how many commercial properties are being built in Waterville Valley and have been for a number of years? I don't know. Not many, right? However, we can, huh? Fair comment.
No, please.
No, but how many houses are being built, right? And anyway, I don't know what more I can say.
Can I put something into record? There are, there are six undeveloped lots in this one. Three of them. Three of the, I build. Bill, I will have, I'll have to pass the word on to the owner of the school to lose their pockets.
I'll just make a comment. It's Janet Mellon, that I think people bought in Waterville Valley, they bought the land in good faith, and I think we owe it to them to allow them to have that land in good faith. I, as a taxpayer, don't wanna be paying insurance policy for years and years because we either had to purchase the land or we've been sued. I really think it's in good faith. We, we need to allow these people with the engineering restrictions to build on this land. I think it would be an atrocity not to allow people to spend that much money that's been in this long, not to live here now.
Yeah, I only wish COVID hadn't happened because we're ready to build. COVID happened. I know, another COVID story, right? The contractor, Rich DeHecky, who I think some of you guys know, came and said, Rich, don't build now. It'll cost you three times what it was gonna cost you six months ago. Wait a couple of years. So we wait a couple of years. I go to see Rich DeHecky. I go to see Rich DeHecky again. Rick says, Rich, I'm so busy, I can't get to you for three to four years. All right? You can check that. He's, you know, he's all over the place. So here we are, having this discussion. And I guess I should have just.
One more point for the record. In Moose Run, there is a development now of two new houses, one behind an existing house in, in L shape.
Right.
The land is like this. Over the past two months, they brought in well over a hundred giant concrete Legos with a big engineering firm. It's, it's fifteen feet high, step back fifteen. If, if you haven't seen it, go see. It is, it's remarkable. And the price tag is astronomical. It's happening because the lady can afford to pay it. Go look at it. It's, you won't believe it, how big it is. The whole side of it. And it's all drained, with drainage under every.
So she has one.
It can be done.
To where? Drain's to where?
Upper Snow's Mountain.
I think you, you can't, you can't stop the rain. If I buy a piece of property that's got a stream on it, you gotta work with it.
I'm sorry, hello? We've got a little bit more to leave. We're gonna move on to amendment number two or amendment number three. It's time we understand your turn and we got it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to amendment number three.
I'm sorry.
Barry, if you're gonna go back on amendment number two?
No.
I would like you to respect you. Let's take this order, okay, please? We've already discussed a few, what continues to come in the separate thread.
Amendment number three would add provisions to Articles Six Floodplan Management Overlay District to limit land usage in the floodplain to those that would not increase flood levels, increase the potential for damage to property, or increase risk to public safety or emergency personnel. The new language would include provisions for the planning board to issue conditional use permits to allow improper elevation and floodproofing, limited development such as building replacements and additions. New accessory structures and one new principal building would be allowed if no land was available on the lot outside of the floodplain. Compensatory flood storage would be required if any fill was involved.
Okay, amendment number three. Followed on amendment number three.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Where are the floodplains today in Waterville? I think I know of one. On West Branch Road. Is that correct?
The, the West Branch, Mad River has a floodplain associated with it.
Okay.
And Snow's Brook, the lower end of Snow's Brook as it comes into the Mad River.
That's the only area then?
These are established by the federal floodplain
Okay.
uh, program. So those maps are online uh, in, in what, but, but there are, there are several here in town that this would apply to. Tara, these are the required changes, correct, to bring us into compliance?
No. We did that last year. The, these are to make it a no net loss.
Okay.
Lot ordinance. So the, so the, what's required for flood insurance doesn't tell you what or how to build in the floodplain, just that it has to be flood-proofed or elevated. This, this goes a step further and says you can only build in the floodplain portion of the lot if you have to. If you can show us that you have to, there's nowhere else to put this thing. And if you're removing flood storage capacity by doing that, you need to create some, an exchange.
I have a question under L Variances and Appeals, number four, at the bottom of page nine. It says the community shall, and then it lists a bunch of things the community has to do. What does it mean by the community? Is that the right term, the community in this ordinance?
I'll, I'll check that. That's, that's, um, that is part of the required language, but I'll, thanks for pointing that out. I'll check and make sure it wasn't supposed to say the select board or Waterville Valley.
You have a comment on amendment number three? Barry, anything? Okay, we're gonna move on to amendment number four.
Amendment number four would add a new shoreline protection overlay district that would include the land that is within fifty feet of the ordinary high-water mark of all perennial streams, parentheses, year-round rivers and brooks, close parentheses. In this district, new development would be limited to uses, uses required to be near the water, including would not limited to roads and utilities, and removal of vegetation would be limited to such purposes as maintenance of existing trees and shrubs in open areas. In addition, ground cover and stumps would be required to be left in place, and pesticides and herbicides would be limited to licensed applicators.
Right. Number four.
What of perennial streams? Where, where are they?
In, in Waterville Valley, it's, it's the Mad River and Snow's Brook.
And the west.
And the west branch to the Mad River.
So like the floodplain areas?
Yes, there is a great deal of overlap.
The rains that run all year round.
Okay.
Recognize.
Kelly Chen, I have a question about Corcoran Pond. Is that considered part of Snow's Brook because the river flows into it and then out of it again, so that falls within the Corcoran Pond as separate entities?
It, it is separate, yeah.
And it is not included.
Is not included. We discussed this.
We discussed it.
Whether to include it or not.
Is Corcoran Pond owned by the town?
Yes.
The pond is.
Okay.
Trying to think of a quick way to summarize, I don't know how many hours of debates we had on, on this. Anyone wanna take a crack at it?
Well, let me take a simple crack.
Please.
Long, long ago in a galaxy far, far away, when the Waterville Valley gifted Orklin's Pond to the town, certain provisions were made that granted to the Waterville Valley certain, let's sort of simplistic things, although not technically correct, rights and privileges. And this would supersede those, and the select board and the planning board do not think that is wise. Is that about right?
Developmental rights and.
Simply, well, Waterville Company.
And, and those.
And no, and no default.
And there's already a development district on Orklin Pond, which would be in conflict.
Oh, it was gone on top of that.
The overlay would have gone on top of it, which would have annulled the allowances under that special zoning district that's already there.
So, so what is already there? Is that more protective of the water or less?
No, it's less. The, the current zoning district allows construction through the.
Of the water. That's, well, like, we are upstream of everybody else in downtown. This, including the pond, is way more important to me than twenty-five percent rate on the six lots left me down. Like, the, the pond flows into the Mad River, which flows into the, which, like, affects on my down. It's protecting, like, runoff, goes there, it's a lot more important. And I would really like to use the pond. Or the uses that are currently around the amended.
And that water seeps into the aquifer. It's a matter of when and where.
The answer to this question is that there is already an agreement between the town and what was the Waterville Company, which is well, which is now a development company. And it's a duly executed agreement that governs how the management of the, of the pond will be conducted.
And that there are site plan regulations runoff is one of the things that the planning board can look at and, and, can take control to some. It's already in our site plan rights.
But it's not in there yet.
Right. Hang on. Sorry, go ahead.
It's not in the site plan regulations yet. It's in, it's in proposed revisions.
My concern is, is that if we don't protect that, and when it comes time, that the development around that pond stops and that pond has to be dredged, and the numbers on dredging of that pond is the town's responsibility. I beg to differ. The decision not be the way it is.
I'm sorry, what, what was the?
I don't think it should be up to totally the taxpayers to take the full responsibility of having that town
Right.
dredged because of the development that's going to proceed around the pond. Why should it be up for us to take care of their venues? Sorry. That's the way I feel.
There is an impeachment on that issue and it's pretty interesting.
There are multiple evements.
That's my concern.
We, uh, we will be facing a large dredging bill. You're gonna see that also.
Last time we traced it, we pointed money there to be up for next project.
Well, that's a different, how we go about finding.
Say, the money's been accrued.
No. It has not. No, it has not. But the point I wanted to make is the dredging that we passed through in twenty, twenty oh nine is a result of the material that's flowing down Snow's Brook into, into the pond. Not, it's not because of the development yet.
But it's because we're, the Conservation Commission is trying to buffer some of that.
We're, we're, we're trying to rest that above the pond.
Drainage ditch below to clear out.
If the state will allow us to build that sediment pad.
It shouldn't be the town's total nickel, nickel for paper.
So I, I'm trying to guess, older way. I'd like to be back within these statements. Are you concerned about, um, nonlicensed applicants putting herbicides and pesticides in this system? I'm just concerned, why, why? So who would that be and why would that?
A homeowner.
But it, so are they, so they're okay to put it on their property, but not your own property?
That's current, right?
And how do you regulate that? Good luck.
If I'm not mistaken, was it BBMS involved in that investigation?
I can see that very clearly.
It's not, that's, nobody's looking at it. It's.
Right, it's invisible.
Yeah. Uh, any more thoughts, comments on amendment number four? I'm, I'm gonna move on to amendment number five. And I'm not more than a glass.
Amendment number five, you're going to own at least three acres at the northeast corner of lot one oh five dash ten from recreation to lower density residential with a boundary between the new lower density residential area and the remaining rec land drawn at a straight line from the southwest corner of lot one oh four dash three six to the northwest corner of lot one oh five dash ten point thirteen.
That's, that's this. Sort of like.
I just can't state my attention today. I thought Waterville Company owned that land, but I know Craig does, right? And I went to town hall this morning and just, cause I couldn't find the information on it. And it's my understanding, I, I think I understand what he's trying to do. And it's three acres of land that also happens to have, what's wrong with me? Yeah, the trail, right. And now, yes, exactly. So I guess I have.
So I guess I have a bunch of questions and concerns. My first question is. Uh, we gotta be, are they gonna limit that? If if this were to happen. Because right now, as you know, we walk off a little trail on Snow's Mountain Road across our right away that I say ours, the towns. And you go left up Criterion or right down to the golf course. So I know that that land is encompassed by that. So my first concern is that somehow we will lose access to Criterion. And all that take takes a salt of trails in the south side of town without getting in the car. That's my first question. And has that been addressed or thought of?
It does.
Okay, uh, you guys have thoughts on that already or what?
Uh, the, it's the resort that owns the easements. For Snow's Mountain Trail like and and the upper Criterion Trail.
Right.
Um, unless they abandon those easements, they would still be in play whoever the owner of the property is.
I would ask that that be straightened out because since, you know, I've moved there twenty years ago, there's been a lot of changes that. One of the beauties of this place, including the W V A I A, is the idea of all these connected trails. And I think Waterville Company building, and this doesn't mean, yeah, necessarily do it now, but it's the same issue.
Right.
Has cut a lot of cross-country trails. They've messed up Cascade Ridge, so I'm gonna allow them to. Block that ski trail, which is not a ski trail anymore, but it's a hiking trail. And so. Up on Snow's Mountain Road. I know we can't cross over uh to Snow's Mountain anymore because our neighbor up there doesn't want anyone crossing over there. So. I would be very concerned if we lose access to the whole southern end of town from Snow's Mountain Road. If in fact, that wasn't allowed. That's that's my main concern, right? About the whole project. My second is. I understand that Craig wants to put a road in from our way, which means you have to cross. You know, the town's land. That's my understanding and I asked today. And I'm wondering.
About a driveway, you mean?
Yeah.
To get into the house.
Well, all all that little access road that's there in the corner, my, I'm not sure what the plan is or what they're thinking. But my understanding is that's his only access is to get access from Snow's Mountain Road in there. And then. I did see a little thing that I know it's not here tonight, that apparently Craig gave you guys. I don't know. He's presented this to you. About the location of the house. So, I mean, I'm I'm gonna ask Craig to walk me through it. I'm obviously right across the street. As well as my neighbors above me, they couldn't make it tonight, but they weren't, they're concerned about it could have fluxed the land also. And access that they have to get there. So I know it's just starting, right? And just from a process point of view. I I probably will this all get addressed. And in terms of concerns about access. And even where the house is going to be, frankly, you guys know, right across from my house. It's a this kind of swampy area. I know it's not going there, which has always made me happy because there'll never be a house there, right? But I I'm I'm concerned. I just want to understand what the process is and how this will get done. Or how it won't get done. I mean. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The the lot, the lot does not exist yet. There would be a subdivision plan that would have to be submitted. To make that law. During that time would be, it'd have to go through the regular subdivision application.
Now it's three acres.
It, yes. But that's not the what, the only thing that this amendment does, it does not. Create the subdivision. It simply rezones that area in yellow. From recreation to L V R. That's all it does. It, the subdivision is a completely separate. Process.
Well, I think in fairness, I mean, there's no way of determining, I mean, what the rules would be about.
Well, no, because no subdivision plan has been submitted. To create this lot or any other lots. Associated with this one. So all that the town's being asked is, do you want to rezone this from recreational to low density residential? That's all. It's a, it's a yes or no.
Right, so the issue of people's access.
People's access and what the, what the, whether there's one lot there or whether there's. Multiple lots there and all that would have to be done through a subdivision process.
No, that was.
Right, well.
Well, I understand, but.
This is a first step, but but the only thing we're asking the towns. Do you wanna make this low density residential? What? Right? Planning board is.
And and in that decision.
The planning board talked about as part of this, but we're we're really, we don't have a subdivision going in front of.
And so. They, you could. Is there any influence? I don't know how to say it, right? But. Is there any, there's no way that you guys in terms of planning this before Craig goes and sells this piece of land to somebody? Right? That we get would have some protection. Because uh the access to Criterion and the whole southern town from there. That's my question.
Not, not as part of this process. It would be well within the subdivision.
I would ask you to at least talk, I mean, I'll I'll see Craig this week.
He's right there. For white.
No.
Craig's in Florida. I was gonna say, oh, he's not, yeah.
The first one wants to purchase the property.
Oh, okay. That that to me is the issue I have. I think we, it's a bigger picture to me, not just the fact that it's across from my house. Because to me, the town's getting chopped up. The trails are harder to follow. Everywhere you go, there's changes like that.
Unfortunately, the town is not party to any of those.
Those are.
Those easements are.
Water Valley Resort.
And the Waterville Valley Resort. And quite frankly, they could abandon all of those trails tomorrow. And the town would not have anything to say about.
Why are you saying that you should do something, take the land and make an access? Because this town's getting hotter and hotter. The beauty of this town has always been park your car, get out, you have access to the whole place.
These are some of our.
Anyway, I know it's all subdivision, I got it. Anyway, I I know you say it comes later. In your decision making of this, how does that work?
We deliberate on this next. Be called.
To decide whether to put it forward to a vote. By the town.
Okay, I'm just saying, so if it voted at a town meeting, and if it was approved, then it would go to the zoning board?
No, so uh we're taking public comments now. And then our next meeting is on December twelfth at eight A M. Where we'll, where between then and now, we'll cogitate on all this and then we'll globiate about all this. And then we'll decide what, if any of these, we want to bring forward and what forms. To uh town meeting day on March fifth, twenty twenty five, but this is not a uh business. Uh, this is a vote. Right? This is not a uh business session, you know, where we all get together and talk through warrant articles. This is the vote, the, you know, the ballot beforehand.
Okay.
So the discussion will. Uh, we'll have our discussion on the twelfth. And uh. Whatever we put forward.
Will be voted on.
Will be voted on.
I got, I understand. Okay, that's our meeting.
On on the voting.
Yes.
You know, in the open meeting.
Right.
So, hold on, hold on. Tara, can you just explain if the board's taken a lot of information here? If they decided to change any of these amendments, what will be the process they will have to follow?
They'd have a second public hearing on the New Virgin.
So the twelve they made.
I was changing.
What's the grade on this land?
Not gonna speak on the the um. So my name is Paul Waller. I've been managing Waterville Valley on lot since around two thousand and eight. I've been a scheme instructor. I know some people here. And so um, the story was I was trying to buy in lot thirty-six of Snow's Mountain Road. And I did submit an offer and was not accepted. I I was gonna get a counter offer and never can. And some of you may know that the middle part of that lot is very kind of swampy. So I had an idea, what if I could, if I could get that lot in a good place, what if I couldn't approach Craig about maybe adding a little bit of grounds? What end of it, so I'd have some land, build a house. So I had a conversation with Craig. And he said that uh he's actually planning to. Um, get rid of surplus lands. And second thing he told me was he actually had planned to build a house in that area some time back. He showed me the map. So we discussed, well, what if we uh talk to the town and see if there's a possibility we zone that land? Um, and so then we'd be willing to sell the house to him. And um. If you have top amounts here. One is a tax map. The other is um a map that is um done by Craig's engineering firm, which actually shows. A lot, you know, I'm sorry.
Now.
Alan is a feature. Uh, so the, yeah, the access actually awesome bottom road. Then, um, and I'll pass, I'll pass it around. Two, two apps each. Don't think the uh for to see the second map, I gave it to the town today.
Questioning whether the.
Was this too much?
Yeah.
Really, I I think really what the town needs to understand is this is just to rezone that space. Okay, and yes, there are, there are plans. None of this is approved or even submitted yet to the planning board. It does go to answer your question, Alan. But but it's, there's another step. And so this is good to know, but it might all change when it gets submitted to the planning.
Okay.
Okay, right. But but the bottom line is. There there's L V R here, there's L V R here, and there's a small silver of land in between them that is recreation. The question is, do we want to connect all of that low density residential zone all together? As L V R. So you, you're just taking that red piece out of the middle. And that's really the question.
Well, really.
For the town.
That's.
And it does make it.
Because that lane could be cut off and he would have an island up there, right, or some criteria because. Yeah, I've been down here a few times, so I know exactly. I know you, I think I know we gotta, it's why, why build a house. But I could be wrong, but it's.
And we are making it, we are creating the potential for a buildable lot to be in that.
That's what this is all about.
That's what this is all about. But that isn't what you're proving or disapproving. You're you're simply gonna be saying whether or not that can be. Low density residential. And then the planning board will have to deal with the access to the trails and those sorts of things. When and if the the uh. The subdivision comes before. Because there may be more than one lot created up there. We don't know what the actual. It's three acres, who may only get it all.
Yeah, right.
You know, and Craig may say, no, I want to do it in two pieces. We don't. We don't have anything in front of us right now.
Great.
Right, but you still don't know what the grade is on three acre land.
I think that would be helping to secure the larger context. Um, so uh where I would build a big word happens would be. Um, you know that here can, you walk off that here can, um, it relatively flat. But I'll get that here. So somewhere in that area. So it wouldn't be a single house. Something like three thousand bucks, like forty five sixty.
I don't saw taped up. Did you guys take that out?
No, actually, that is the um lot thirty-six.
That's what.
You don't sell me that lot. So that's why this.
No, one year, soccer, well, it's it's some of them said in there.
Or maybe Horizon Engineering, but I haven't been up there for. Okay, for for a few weeks.
Okay, I get the one's fine, fine. You can go with the twelve or whatever.
So there is no grade on this land?
Oh, um, there is, um, but not. One of the near where I'm gonna build. It would be just in this relatively. It's a relatively gentle, smooth piece of groundway off.
As you go around the corner on the backside of this lot, it's it's.
It's very steep.
Not where he's.
There are, it varies. Behind the, behind the airkins.
Yes.
It's well above the.
Yeah, that's probably about fifty fifty-five percent grade.
But the only thing that had happened here is Craig declared that he had certainly planned. Craig had said that uh he drawn a line and said above this land. To the north of it, his surplus land of him and he wants himself. That's all that has happened.
In his credit, he's got Horizon Engineering, which is a premier civil instructional engineering company. We might actually look at it.
This is to make a, what is, an unbuildable lot, it's already there.
I understand. Access, we have a house in place. You know.
Yeah, but from the planning board's point of view, is it in the best interest of the town? To change this from the regular to L V R? Nobody's listening.
They shut down the address and that's not the grand introduction.
We don't control the access. Beginning. So we're not shutting.
I I mean, it sounds like you're ordering to be disposed of those.
No, no.
No.
That's not true.
But we were putting forward amendments.
Pretty good at this stuff.
If there's no. Uh, Paul. If there's no more comments on amendment number five? Any other comments? I'm not fully. I think I'll follow the amendment.
Thank you, Tara.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Well, do you want us to? How do you want to do the the changes? You'll just talk about them on the twelfth?
Yeah, I don't really know, unless they want to stay and talk about it now.
Do you, do you want to talk to Tara at all before going to the twelfth? Meeting? Because you can stay in a meeting. And you can, you can talk to her. I would give her a little bit of guidance. Hold on, let me get these folks out of here so you can have a conversation.
Excuse me, everyone. Hold on, the guy. Tara, Tara on the board and not talking about it. Someone had comments. So, so you guys, they have a comment, there's a four year.
Or you can stay.
Or you can stay. It's a public thing, we say, whatever you want.
Thank you so much for your time and your time. Good evening. You didn't mean bring me an evening. Actually, I did. As a winner, I talk about it. It's all for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know, I know what it is to volunteer time like.
I need to go home. We go to Pennants. Yes, go ahead, Tara.
Well, I guess. My question would be. Does the planning board want to see any of these changes for the, for the next meeting? Some of the things I noted. Um. Were to add unregistered vehicles to that. Um, per title of D in number one, so it would say junkyards and unregistered vehicles. That, that was a good suggestion.
No.
Um. But then the three things I wrote down that were substantive comments that you guys need to weigh in on, um. The zoning ordinance doesn't really cover those movable things. That people buy to cover vehicles and equipment. Do you want to address that now or kind of put it on a to-do list for the future?
I don't think the movable structure, they're adding, should include that is a bad idea, but I don't know how instant we want to get on it all.
Or do you want to say they're not? It's very different from the term structure.
Yeah, I mean, towns do deal with that all, that question all the time because people. Do something and say, well, it's movable, so it's not a structure and and they're cheap and. But it seems like a different issue that you should talk about. With more time. And 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 talk about in the context of the structure definition, not. Not the junkyard and camper and whatnot amendment. Not trying to kick the. Not trying to kick the can down the road to what will be somebody else's problem, but I'd put it on the list for next year.
I agree. We're looking at the definition of structure for next year.
Yeah, and think about whether you want to include those, like, what was called the quantum hut type things. Cause those are, those are common and they're inexpensive and towns deal with that issue all the time, so. I think it's a conversation to involve your code enforcement officer in.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I am, I have a question.
So we vote for this until next year?
Well, that particular.
Just talking about amendment one.
Are we trying to push forward on amendment one, or are we?
Well, we're just trying to.
I'm not done with my list, Bill.
Yeah, we're trying to give Tara some ideas.
Just, I just wanted to see one of the things I jotted down and then hear what you jotted down. The other was, do you? The woman made a good point about the storage. Storage of things being different than. Temporarily staying in a camper and whether those should be two different amendments. What did you think about that?
Dividing into two.
Too many people were talking, sorry.
I think.
You're drawn. Take the consensus.
Yeah.
That was a good point.
But Mike says yes, Bill says yes.
We all say yes.
We all say yes to that.
Okay. That's all I wrote down, what else, what else did you guys pick up?
On amendment one?
On amendment one.
On one.
Start, start a little bit there.
Well, I don't know if this means or any, but how big the vehicle could be or cannot be. Definitely matters. And how many vehicles, did we say?
We, we don't regulate those.
Junkyard's definition is two or more.
I know.
That's there on the lifetime.
Yeah, that's the state, that's the state definition is two or more is a junkyard. But I think if you tried to regulate the number of registered vehicles, you would be up against, you wouldn't, you wouldn't win that court case.
Oh, that's.
You're going to lose.
We don't want to go.
I've lost, I've lost in other towns to that. They will pay for a license plate. It can be totally undrivable, but if they have registered it, it is a registered vehicle in. And it is on their property, that will not count towards a junkyard.
Right.
Seen the guy do it. No tires, rusted out. He put it, he paid for a registration and he couldn't drive it on the road because it was un-inspected, but it was registered.
And it's because you can't prove intent.
That's correct.
Yeah, can you say that the vehicle has to be either garage or on a driveway? Can you say that? I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking. Can you say that the vehicle has to be either garage? On a driveway? All right? Or in a, in a condominium parking lot? In other words, it can't be on grass, it can't be, just, can you say those things?
You can't make people pave their drive. I could have a driveway.
I didn't, I didn't say pave.
No, but, but my driveway could be grass, how are you going to differentiate between them?
Because the driveway leads to something.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
You could have two tracks over grass leading to your house or go wherever you want to go.
You could just have a front lawn and park on the front lawn and that's your driveway.
Well, I'll be like, what's, like, somebody in the audience, what, what problem would you be trying to solve?
Numbers.
Well, we weren't trying to solve those, I mean, I think a lot of the comments were explaining as to what we were trying to do. I mean, so we're running the business of regulating size or number of vehicles or advertisements on vehicles or types of vehicles and. No.
Right, this, the problem that this amendment was trying to solve was that it's impossible to enforce something that says inside of.
That's right.
Okay, that was the whole point. Okay. It was the front setback, and I think we just limited to that.
Okay.
We don't address any of these.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Anyway.
But what came up, whether or not we want to insist that the vehicle, whatever it is, the thing, is covered. Is it covered in some way which would satisfy the concealment issue? Or we not go?
But if you do that, you're putting code enforcement and public safety in a very difficult situation. Because if I have five family members come over for the weekend and they park everywhere on my lot. For two days. Under our current ordinance, somebody can complain about. Right, I mean, that, that's what we were hearing from people that they were against. You can't stop that from happening.
Didn't think so.
You know, and we were, we're getting complaints right now, remember, about those class B RVs, the vans. Because they are so similar now.
Yeah.
And they're, you know, and when someone parks it behind their house and their neighbor can see it and the PD gets called. They drive by the house and they can't see anything, that's what we're trying to overpro. And if we try to fiddle around with it, it's really gonna continue the impossible situation.
Yeah, but if it were not for the fact that we're trying to help public safety, we wouldn't have this amendment.
Well, no, what it is, you're not helping public safety, you're, you're making it possible to enforce. Right now, the wording, we can't, well, but it's important because we can't go on someone's property. To see if, if they are in effect in violation of this. That's what Chief Payer was saying.
Right, okay, so by rephrase and say that. The purpose of this amendment was to make it possible for public safety to enforce regulations. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing it.
About, it's something you said about it, making it hard for him, so you know, if someone's complaining, you can't go on a private property, but if I'm complaining. Because I'm, I'm looking at Morgan's RV and it's in her backyard, but I can see it on my property and I'm the one making the call, wouldn't I then invite public safety? Have them stand on my property and say, look, you can see it right there, like, they're not going on to their, you know, they don't need a warrant. I, I, cause I totally, I get that, you can't go on somebody else's property.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to ask chief to come in and talk to them.
That's why, that's what, I was a little unclear.
Well, and that's, he would have to come in and explain that to you, but it was my understanding that they could not do that. They cannot go around, I, I know. But I know.
Not everybody may know, not everybody have the same answer.
It's a question of hot fire down, we want the road we want to know, turning on, of limiting property rights to people in their vehicles.
And I think in your example that you just gave, if it's a class B RV, there's no way for chief to prove that. That may be a van. But he can't go on that person's land. He can check the registration, but if it comes back as van, that's a, that's a P O D. There's nothing.
I would just comment what we got, I didn't hear. There were a couple of close. Comment, I didn't, I thought the main issue would come about limiting it to the front setback. And I didn't hear a lot of that.
No.
I think we clocked that and move on, because that's what we wanted. Was to, was to change this to front setback in public way and not have to worry about the other. Corners of the property.
Our two favorite contestants from Moose Run had a lot to say about that. They didn't want vehicles parked on, or close to lot lines on top of the.
Yeah.
But they do, they do that through their, through their homeowners.
Right.
And, and so, that doesn't mean that that has to apply to the rest of town.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I agree with them, reference.
Yeah, all the associations do, it's those people who live in private homes who may be unhappy with looking at an RV. That their neighbors.
A lot of people in private homes are still part of the association.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's, that's.
Saying that I agree with it. I agree with, let's let the associations deal with that business of the setbacks.
I just don't know that you'll get the amendment.
I think we put, I think we make the changes that we talked about and we're talking about it again on the, well, the boat, about putting it forward, but splitting it up. And adding unregistered vehicles. To the title of the two things that I got out of it, that is something that we don't want to do. Everything else seemed to be superfluous.
It was also the inclusion of this word junkyard. That attracted a lot of attention.
Right.
We don't need that.
Well, junkyard and unregistered vehicles, I think is how we're gonna get it.
Can we ask or require at town meeting if this goes forward? And people are gonna vote, like, I mean, I guess they're voting on it before we talk.
Yeah, no, there's no discussion.
There's no discussion.
Get up and say anything.
No, well, we'll have another.
You can have another public.
Right, after we put them forward, we can have a public hearing.
Right.
Could have it quickly. Could have it very quickly.
I could be doing usually in January.
In January.
We'll use in January.
Let's split it up into two.
Or even just stay.
Can we move on?
Yes.
Number two. Amendment two.
I have a suggestion on number two, and I actually thought about this before we had a discussion. I think we can eliminate the last sentence, I think it's superfluous. Because basically what it says is that if it's fifteen percent or more.
You go through a process.
You go through a process, and that process is us.
Right.
Right? And if we don't like it, we say no.
Right.
So I don't think the second sentence that said.
That's what people were keen on.
I think by eliminating a second sentence.
Prohibiting it, prohibiting it, it's twenty-five.
Right, eliminating the second sentence. Makes everybody reasonably happy, and I think, I think it still gives us that which we want to accomplish.
Excited when reviewed.
Well, handle it.
But we're still saying no later, the site disturbance greater than a thousand square feet stays on it. I, I mean, I don't know, I thought it was a good idea that we had to keep the one piece that you shouldn't have, you know, can't be. Any more erosion around than what it currently.
You have that. You have that with the.
No, I don't think, Tara, what are you saying first, number two? You know, that definitely to keep that one piece if, if we let the rest of this go, because I don't know if we're gonna, if, if we start putting. And I mean, I. I go back and forth, but, but if we take out, which I agree, you know, if you take up structures over twenty-five feet or twenty-five percent, but, but also people are gonna say. Yeah, but now I can only have a site, you know, thousand square feet, like, you're still limiting me, you're still limiting me, which is basically what I heard was the biggest.
Right, but it may have.
So, you know, versus if we just have it, something gets passed or if it's a little more general, because the problem was, we're worried about erosion, we're worried about runoff, if that's the problem.
Yeah, right now, I think there's more you need to do than just take out the no structures on slopes over twenty-five percent, because it doesn't require an engineer yet. Says a surveyor can do the plan, so, I mean, I, I thought that was a reasonable suggestion to require an engineer.
You get suggestion to put in a, I don't know, the project terminal, it's been a certified engineer. Uh, put it in there, I have no problem with that, I think that makes sense.
Can I finish, though? I thought I was talking. So, what, what, what he made the suggestion of was to have an engineer do a stormwater plan, the stormwater managed on site. And don't talk about where you can build or. I thought that was reasonable, but what about the grade piece that's in there? Right, the, the cut and fill not to exceed one to two.
I think that if the amendment insists on engineering, then we don't need the specified restrictions.
Yeah.
For the purpose of controlling stormwater runoffs.
Yeah.
So you'd get, so if we're looking at F performance standards. We would, we would only keep number four. And up in. E, we'd say prepared by an engineer. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, that may have a chance, yeah.
Black and Beach could build a, building on any.
Oh, sure.
That you wanted without a single grain of sand.
Yes.
Coming off of it, I guarantee, I mean, if you've got enough money, there's an engineering firm that can build it.
Yeah, the Moose Run example was.
The Moose Run example.
Yeah.
So, I, I like, I like the idea of having. A, an engineer's stamp on it so that if we have the problem, we've got something to fall back on. Hey, this is what was given to us, and now we have this erosion problem that we shouldn't have.
In a sense, isn't this now moving more towards doing for. Private homes what we do for commercial structures?
Yes.
We as a town want to make sure that this, the water, water running off of this. I don't know where their comments came about covers and whatnot, I think they were kind of wrong. But we want to make sure that the covers we have can handle it, or the developer, the owner has to. Do something to that cover so that it doesn't overwash the road and erode the road and all of that, that's our concern. But we can require.
We can require them to put in certain.
A larger, you know.
Well, hold on, the, the way this is written.
Tara, wait.
The way this is written, and I thought the direction this would be going would be, they wouldn't need to upgrade covers because they need to deal with the stormwater on site.
They could take care of them.
Oh, yeah, sure, that's, that's even better, right?
That's what number four is in the performance standards right now, and that's the piece that I was saying, and if you just kept one piece of this.
Yeah, okay.
That's the one.
Why wouldn't we keep number two in F?
Two S? Or F two?
I, I think there, I'm not arguing for taking it out, but I thought the argument was. Let the engineer decide what needs to happen on the site to keep, to keep the stormwater on site.
With regard to the soil and vegetation?
Right. That you're not gonna decide. Ahead how the engineer has to achieve that, number four.
I'm thinking about what happened with, I don't know, it's on Stone Tower Lane, it's the old far line, I don't know what it is, but. Somebody new bought it.
Yeah.
Cut down trees and that is a steep slope, the, the stumps are still in place. And it goes right down to like where.
That was because David Britton gave them, that was, those trees were on his.
Okay.
And so, so that was a agreement between two private owners.
Okay.
And David, I forget what he got something on, he got them to pay for something he wanted, I can imagine what it was, but that was, that was the deal. But they did keep the stumps in.
Yeah. So I mean, that's just where my mind is, like, it, so they can cut down the trees, if we take out number two, they can cut down the trees and leave the stumps, and that's fine with everybody, because they want the view, but.
There's also another state law that you can't tell, they can't cut down the trees on their property. That exists.
No, but during development. That's.
Well, these are private homes, right, and not talking about commercial.
But private property. Property owner can cut down the trees if he wants to. I don't think there's anything that that town ordinance could do to stop it.
I, I, in my mind, that's what number two does, but I see what Tara's saying, but that's, you can't tell them ahead of time how they're gonna manage the water until they've got the structure.
Cause what, what we can impact, Tara, what we, only what we can impact is erosion in the water, right, I mean. I don't know.
Right, I mean, I think if you're requiring an engineer to achieve number four, you. You're kind of shaky with number two. Bill, there's no state law that says you can't tell people they can't cut trees down, that's, I don't want that in your live recording as a fact, it's not exactly like that.
Okay, what is it?
I, I, I don't think this is the time or place for a whole land use discussion, but that, there's no state law like that.
Okay, so I'm not in favor of it, but that was my understanding.
I mean, that, this is exactly what the shoreline ordinances do and the wetland ordinances, they tell people they can't cut the trees on their property. They tell people they can't cut the trees on their property. A- and many steep slopes ordinances, they're totally, totally defensible. But, but I'm just saying that if you're hanging a hat for number four on an engineer's stamp. I'm not sure how we can also tell them how they're achieving this thing.
I agree with that.
Okay, that's fair.
So we're eliminating one, two, and three?
I, I've marked, I've marked mine up, I, I know what we're doing.
When would you think you'll, you'll have this?
You'll have it before the meeting on the twelfth, so that you can look at them then.
And vote, thank you.
And you, as of now, need to have a second public hearing, the changes on the first one, you didn't, but the changes on the second one, you do.
Number three is okay?
I didn't make any notes in there, except to look at the wording, um.
Community, community, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll double check that, it might accidentally have boilerplate language.
And we wouldn't have to include that on a second, it's things like that, we don't include in the second hearing, right?
Change in the word. Community to town, wouldn't, that wouldn't require another public hearing.
Hey Tara, I had a question on number two, cause multiple people, like, were like, I would sue if I had this land and. Well, like, what is there, what is the basis for that, is there any legs to that, like, how could they sue for a, a change like that? As discriminatory?
Well, it, no, there's no such thing as, but what they would do is apply to the zoning board. And get a variance, because they'd be able to prove that they needed the variance in order to do anything with their land, and that's why you have variances.
And again, we see that, it's something I thought would be true too, but, but, but what is not true is that. A zoning change that, um, say lessens the value of your property is not. What?
Illegal.
It's not illegal, now, the argument made that it's, you know, it's immoral, or it's not being neighborly, it's not fair, that's a different. Argument, but in terms of that, I mean, if anybody wants property, it could be.
And if they think that their property's been devalued, they get on a big.
And of course, they can't always sue, anybody can sue.
Anybody can sue.
Right, but the, I mean, when you can't do anything with your land without a variance, that's one of the only. Times a zoning board should grant the variance, that's what variances are for.
Right.
So number four, the only note I made was. If she had a question whether Cochrane Pond is included, maybe, maybe I need to look at it and add a, maybe we need a. Negative statement, instead of just saying it's the perennial stream, is maybe we need to say not including Cochrane Pond. And then you did have some comments about including Cochrane Pond, so I don't know if you wanna talk about that again.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, I mean, I made my feeling, I think that it should be included, but, um, could it also be done separately? If, you know, if the planning board decides, you know, we don't wanna include it, but then again, if there's a group of people that wanna put forward that something, they could do that themselves. It would say, oh, the planning board and the, or the selectmen don't, don't support this, but that is a path forward.
I guess I would, I would try to do that next year when you have the structure in place to amend. Cause I'm, I'm not sure I had write it right now.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I don't. Right, no, I'm not. Right, no, but keep it separate, what I'm saying, so like, if this went forward, you know, as is, um, you know.
You can always readdress it.
People can, we can add it later, or someone could add it to their own, or, you know.
Right, but, but, but now, should we add a statement saying not including Cochrane Pond, or something like that? Do you think it's, do you think it's clear? I, I mean, it, it's hard for me to know, because I write, if I write something, obviously I think it's clear to me.
I think you should include not including corporate's pond to make it clear. For clarity, yeah, I agree, um, because.
So in number three, we'd put it somewhere.
Yes, I agree that the statement not including corporate's pond should be included.
Okay, all right, I'll put it in number three somewhere.
It's gonna raise the question why.
But that should be right.
But I mean, for this amendment.
We still have to deal with.
I think, yes, I think for clarity's sake, it works, but if we're trying to get it passed, it would be.
It will muddy the. No, yeah, right, sorry.
I'm not, I didn't follow where, what we were doing, sorry.
I'm sorry, Tara, I was just wondering if by including why it's not, uh, included. It would raise the question in people's minds, why not, and as Mark said, that would. Muddy things up potentially when it comes to, to passage.
Yeah, there isn't, isn't really a path for putting the why or why not in an amendment. Right.
Just, just put the word done, including corporate's pond, at, at least try to define what's projected.
Why don't we talk about it as a, wow. Agreed.
So I'll do that, and then. Yeah, so I can have these for your meeting.
Can we move on to number five?
Well, five, it doesn't really have language to talk about, you guys need to decide on the twelfth whether you're.
Yeah.
Going forward with it.
So you're gonna present it or not?
Well, I think there's one thing we have to remember, and John and Bill said I was not listening. And that is that at our meeting. Craig indicated that he'd be willing to put into the deed. That the three acres could not be subdivided in the future, and only one home. Would be built on, something for those.
But you can't, if Craig, he doesn't make it back from Florida, you can't count. I don't think the town should represent that that's going to happen. You can't represent that anything is gonna happen until you have a plan in front of you. Then you can talk about putting that in. You know, he can talk about that and tell you, but, but that may be his intention, but that might not be what happens. And I would not want the town representing that this is the way something is gonna happen, when you, you can't guarantee. It's not within your control, it's his.
Change.
This is just as.
So we can't put in there that the. Three acre zone is not subdivisible?
It is subdivitable.
Subdivisible, that's my point.
Yeah.
If you move from REC to LDR, then that's all we're voting on, it, it follows all.
All the LDR rules.
You could easily make three lot, three nice house sites in there.
Yeah.
I think.
No, whatever you said very well, but if, yeah, I shouldn't say it that way.
No, no, that. Because of these two things, we're just moving from REC to LDR.
That's all we're doing.
For the purpose of, I mean, it's, no, no one's hiding the ball here.
No.
Uh, building at least one house, people will have to decide whether they wanna live with them.
We don't have to stipulate what would be built there.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know?
How many? Nor can we make any representations on the.
It's only the governor of Dewey who will agree that it should be moved from REC to LDR.
Correct.
And when it comes to access, that's a whole different. Those trails, uh, they could be abandoned, frankly, I think upper criteria, they're pretty much.
Yes, probably has been abandoned.
I haven't seen anybody working up there and.
We hike it, but. All the trees that fall on it are still.
So they may just, but a lot of that goes to the forest or Moose Run.
But how do you, I, I haven't heard you guys talk about. How you feel about changing this land from. Green, green space between two developments to hitching developments altogether, I haven't heard you talk about that.
Is that, did you have to leave early that day? Because we talked, we switched the agenda around, so I don't think you were there for that, I am vehemently opposed to it, but there, I was in the minority.
Well, you are the minority, but some of us, some of us said. That what I wanted to hear was what people would say, which did not necessarily indicate. How I would eventually vote for it.
Okay.
Well, we have to decide by the twelfth.
Well, that gives me a week or ten days, right?
Yeah. Yeah, there was a lot of talk about it, and, um, Craig and Paul both.
Right.
Came to, Craig said there would be a subdivision plan no matter what coming forward, so.
But it would only be for what could be done with REC.
Yes.
So, I mean, a lot of the comments we heard today expressed the concerns, I think that, but this, your concern.
Craig, maybe you made a comment about that he would put a manager's house on there, or something like that.
Or you can do that.
I don't, I don't think he can, I mean, I'm not your zoning administrator, but. How can he do that after he subdivides it? It wouldn't be the manager's house for the property it's on anymore.
Or he wouldn't do it as a subdivision, in other words, theoretically, it's theoretically part of the golf course. And theoretically, you could put a greenskeeper manager house.
Right.
On there, that would be seasonal for that.
Right.
Theoretically, yeah.
But not three houses?
No, well, no.
I just, I mean, I, I don't know, I look at your zoning map, and I've said this before, that if. If the zoning kinda predated the development, and this was a planned unit development, I think you'd have green space in there. Where the rec zone is, just like you have. I, I'm, I've been surprised to hear you guys throwing that, a good planning away. For one landowner.
So Tara, what you're saying, Tara, what you're saying is that long, long ago in a galaxy far, far away. There is a reason that green space was put in there.
I believe so, when I look at your whole zoning map.
It's a gateway to the white mountain.
It's a green buffer between development areas.
Well, originally that was B C. Most run.
Right.
Yes, yes.
It's, the character of all of that development has changed.
Yes.
In the past two decades.
Frankly, I wouldn't be surprised to see the resort formally abandoned.
Those trails are not going to exist for much longer.
I don't, I don't really care about the trails, but what I care about is that we just. Received a donation of REC land, so that we could keep green space and keep more control over this. Granted, this is a different scenario where it's, was a town done at one point, so that makes sense, but. We all know Waterville has finite resources and can't really expand, whereas whatever percentage built out.
Well.
This is the little bit of land that is connected to the White House, of course.
I didn't hear any of the butters complaining about this.
We have a butter who's on this board, who hasn't been here, I would like to hear their opinion, Nancy.
That's right, she's on the other side. Would be.
But if this were to be.
Yeah, the Moose Run side.
Actually, it kinda backs up to her.
Yeah, yeah.
If this were to be maintained, then, then the town would need to make an offer of this property.
I mean, if it stays REC land?
I wasn't gonna stay. Land and I wanna sell it.
As REC. It'd have, it'd have to be.
But to satisfy your requirements, that it remain green space, how would that be accomplished?
Well, no, he could sell it to a butters, and they would just stay REC land, and then that, that's how they would protect their privacy.
Right.
Potentially, right?
We don't know what the butters would do, but I suppose that's.
One way.
Bottom line for me is that I don't wanna be in the business of taking REC land and turning it into something else.
I heard that.
Yeah, that's it, that's.
And I gave you a possible solution, which is that if you wanted to stay REC or green, then how should buy?
Well, if, if.
Irrelevant, we're talking about.
Irrelevant and immaterial and calls for.
Rec to LBR.
Yeah, but it, it, it undergirds the, the discussion.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion on amendment number five? Tara, do you have enough information on number five?
I, I don't think I'm making any changes to number five.
Yeah, and we can discuss it more on the twelve.
And let's go some more on the twelve.
To start by then bring it forward and.
Okay. Any other, what else, wanna talk about something else?
Alright, good night.
Good night.